All right, sixth floor. Call the order of flag delete please.
Flag delete.
To the flag, we am an exiled American. We serve the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all. First order of business is the approval of the bills. Questions on the bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion to okay them.
Can I make a motion to accept the bills? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Approval of the October 8th, 2025 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 8th meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, mayor's report. Things under the grants are all pretty much going forward. We're still waiting to hear back on most. Working along with the Fast New York grant for the electric upgrade. I wanted to say the Virgin Harvest Market, the last market was on September 30th, and overall, the market was a big success. And we thank all vendors, volunteers, and the residents for all their support. And we look forward to the market continuing in 2026. Our tree and park committee met on November 4th. We discussed the pavilion at Hickory Park, which by the way, the materials did come in.
Agreed.
Like two days ago.
Oh, nice.
So they were unloaded there so they can schedule the work to start erecting that.
Who's putting that up, by the way?
Royal Nine Contracting.
Nice.
We discussed the Veterans Memorial, the bollards along the driveway into the park, and upgrades that we'd like to see for Ward Park in the ensuing year. I attended the Virgin Fire Department monthly meeting on Monday, November 3rd. I try to make their meeting every month. And I wrote they responded to seven calls here in the village, 15 calls in the town, and 10 mutual aids. So it's another busy month for the fire department. And you know, we can't thank them enough for all the services they provide to our community. So a big shout out to the Virgin Fire Department. I put a what's going on with NIPA with the their potential increase in rates. I believe it's going to happen. The MBOAs pretty much signed off on it. And NIAP, the other municipal group, has signed off on it. After, they say, a lot of hours negotiating. You probably remember when the governor shot it down back probably six, seven months ago or whatever. And they went back to the table. And both the NIAP and the MBOA now feel that everything's in line. So that's at a public forum right now still. It's about ready to end though. And then it'll be going up for a vote. After they, they'll see what complaints or whatever came in at these public forums and report to the trustees of NIPA. But at their meeting in December, I believe it's December 9th, they're going to be voting on that. And I would very much expect that to pass. I asked, the rate impact, and they felt, the example they gave was for a home using 600 kilowatt hours a month, it would be from $1 to $2 a month would be the increase. That's going to escalate over the years though. Because this, they have a six-year proposal here, and it's going to go up each year. They're trying to gain back, trying to get back from the rate payers $1.1 billion that they feel they need to upgrade the facility there in Niagara Falls. To make, keep it reliable and... So they haven't had an increase in 14 years. So it's been a long time, so everything goes up. We received delivery of one of the three transformers for our substation upgrade. We needed this one to come in so we could power up the industrial park for Oxbow. We're looking like we're on schedule to energize and have that new voltage up to the park by the end of this month. So we're looking at another 18 days. This is what we're hoping for, and it's looking like we can meet that. So waited a long time for that one. We're waiting for two more. And I've asked the sales rep that we're dealing with to try to schedule those to come in together. Because to have the one unloaded here with $6,000.
For the crane?
For the crane. So I said, when the other two come, please ship them. They can't, two separate trucks, but have them piggyback each other and come together so we can unload them to save $6,000.
Yeah.
So he's going to work on that for us, so. And I explained to you what happened with that pole on November 5th over at Nortera. Our guys were at a engineering workshop when it came over. So luckily, Churchville had two guys stay back. They sent another couple of guys to the workshop, but they, they keep a crew back. And they help us with mutual aid. We helped them, so they were able to come here with their truck and go up and pull some disconnects to isolate that section. And then we were able to go to the substation and turn it back on, get everybody back on in pretty much a timely fashion. And then we worked, we worked over there for a few hours. And then Nick and Maddox, I told them to come back. I wanted them back that night because I wanted that first light to be on that job. Because Nortera couldn't run with that, with that down. It knocked out their communications, their scale, their office, half the facility, so.
Were there broken lines? I mean, when it came down, did it break?
Oh, yeah. Oh, it broke crossarm. They had a big three-phase bank on it, a lot of weight. And actually, it came down and the leads from the transformers up on the primer is what kept it coming all the way down. So it kind of, we thought first it was rusting on the telephone lines. The lines that were hooked to the transformers up to the lines, that's what was holding it up. But a lot of massive weight. I mean, it's a lot. Those three large-sized transformers on that pole.
And they own the poles, but we are required to do the renovations, or is that what they're saying about them?
We're not required. They're our largest customer. We want to do everything we can in our power to keep them going, you know, often. It's in our best interest to work with them and to, you know, fix any problems they have within what we can handle. There are a few times where they've had an issue over there where we said, no, we can't, we can't do that, you know? So they might have to call Connell Electric or somebody else in there for that expertise of that. But for 90% of it, our guys can do all the work over there, so. So like I said, I'm going to meet them on Tuesday and go over the, what we found with the other poles, how they need to be, some of them need to be replaced to eliminate this problem happening again in the near future. And also, I have to touch base with them about them correcting, it's called power factor over there. They have a low power factor, which makes, makes the system work harder. They need to put some capacitors on their lines to up their power factor. And I'm going to discuss that with them because anything beyond the metering point is their responsibility. And in our terror, anything that gives us a poor power factor, they're responsible to correct. So these units are not cheap, and they need four of them. I would be happy if they were replaced maybe one each year for the next four years rather than try to meet the cost of all of them at once. But our engineers, you know, is telling us what we need here. And I'm going to touch base with them on Tuesday at the meeting over at Nortera. And that, I think that's all I got. What do you got, Courtney?
I have my report there in front of me and read it. So I'm just going to point out a couple things. Tax collection season has ended. On the agenda is the affidavit for tax collection. So that allows us to send it over to the county, for the county to start collecting. We're a little, we collected a little less than last year. We have $6,153.60 to send to the county. Overall, it's not bad. What's great about it, the county will then try to collect, and they will send us the full amount of $6,153.60. And then they're responsible to collect it from the resident. So it's really great for us. Besides that, the PSC report was filed, the AFROB filed shortly. One thing I want to bring up is that the server in the office is no longer being supported by Microsoft. So we're just going to become more updated software-wise and... Oh, the, uh... Software, the production software. So we, I'm looking at the costs of replacing it.
That's here in this office?
Yes. It'll probably be, I don't know. When I get the, I'll get that information from Michael Bell. He's, has a company that he used to be a partner with that he's going to talk to, give his price. Also, working with Mike on cameras for Hickory Park. They'll be higher quality, better cameras, with better, better resolution. They're all the things we have. It's, it's pretty good to have quality cameras and go zoom and basically see things, so. That's, we're, we're going to work on that.
Will you get multiple quotes from the server?
Yes. Yes, different quotes on different companies and different servers themselves, different, the separate equipment. Go, you have Dell now and, or you can go Winnebago. Anything on my report to questions about?
No, just, it's pretty funny that you need a material safety sheet for Windeks.
For Windeks, yeah. That's the, I'm just going to throw up the Windeks. Well, it's not just having a sheet. We have to have a whole safety program and training with the staff because we have hazardous materials.
Wow.
And how, so I just want to throw it just...
Well, you have like a toilet cleaner and all kinds of stuff in there?
Yeah.
You're going to have it for all that stuff?
Yeah. He only saw the Windeks. He was in the toilet thing, so. And then we had to put signs up on these doors. Like, that's not an exit. Joe's door here is not an exit. The storage rooms, you'll hurt.
Like in case of fire or something, is that why?
Don't run into the closet.
I mean, I'm looking for those.
Right. We have signs and lights that come on.
Sign of the times.
Yeah, literally.
Is there a sign that says stupid too?
Yeah.
Yeah. If there's an emergency and somebody is really scared trying to get out of a burning building, they're going to stop and read the, what is up on the door. Maybe.
Other orders that you have to find something?
And the other, they do want the DVW. And there, we had fire extinguishers that, we have, we have too many fire extinguishers, what it comes down to. And so the extras were sitting on the, they're just sitting on the ground. And that's not legal. So we had to buy the brackets to hang them. So it's hanging this far on the ground.
So you got a doctor having too many flyers.
Yeah. They're on the ground.
People want to be on the ground, why can't they be on the ground?
I don't know, maybe people see it.
There's people running for the exit or trip over.
Oh, is that a sign saying?
They want to get their bed down and pick it up.
But I will say, the guy who came out was super friendly and very, very helpful. He was really fun to work with, so.
Okay. You all have Gary's report, CEO/CEO report for October? What he's done for the month?
What's a half wall? That's a permit? Can you permit for a half wall?
Yeah, I got instructions.
It's got electric in it, sure.
Yeah.
Or pipe.
Oh, oh, I can use that.
Motion to accept the officer's reports?
I'll make a motion to accept the court of office reports.
All the reports?
Yes, all the reports.
I'll sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee concerns, Bernadette?
Um, no, I didn't have any concerns, but I did, I have noticed the new trees that are not up, and they look great. I love how nice our village looks. And, and what a good job you guys did on the flowers. You switched out the old flowers that were beautiful and put in the new ones.
Yeah, they were starting to go downhill. We didn't want them to get too bad.
Yeah. Very fallacy.
Mike? No concerns?
Todd?
I have a question. We talked about Village of Virgin shirts, swag, whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that might happen?
Uh, yeah, I guess, just what you want and...
Okay.
What size?
Oh, okay.
If you want shirts, polo, polo, t-shirts, polo shirts, or hoodies.
Hoodies, yeah. Okay. So it's just a matter of letting them?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd be willing to pay for it. I mean, it's not something we want to have the village pay for. I don't care. I just, it would be kind of cool to have.
Yeah, the place where we got them, they've crunched out anything, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. The other observation I had was the summer at, at the lake, Village of Perry has a really nice water park. They've got the sea serpent, you know, and everything is spitting water. They've got stuff that pours. But if, you know, I'm just saying for the future, if there's a chance that we could do a water park, it draws a lot of people. I mean, a lot of kids love it. My grandkids, oh my God, they didn't want to leave. It was really cool, so. Just with the thought.
Do you know anyone there affiliated with the park that you could?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Get a ballpark figure?
Absolutely.
I know they're expensive.
Yeah, oh, sure.
And find out also how much water they use, consumption, and what it costs them for the season to run it.
Yeah.
We could have that if, if grants available?
Yeah. I'll find out. It's just, it's a nice addition to that village. And it's nice, you know, the lake was a little bit green and slimy, so you take the kids up to the water park and, you know, it's just as good, so. You still have that little wading pool there? Or is that gone? No, that's gone. Oh. But anyway, that's it.
Okay. Okay, under new business?
Yeah, as I said before, this affidavit is, just allows us to send the unpaid taxes to the county for collection. Now I'll need three board members to sign.
Do you have an official one that you have there that you want us to sign?
Yeah, that's one.
Do you need a motion, Courtney, or don't?
Yes.
Yeah, we probably should. I'll make a motion to accept the affidavit of which.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
This next resolution came from the fire department's attorney. Last board meeting, we appointed a public hearing officer for the public hearing they had for lending. So this is just the final part of that, saying all the procedures were meant and that the board approves them borrowing funds for the equipment to prepare.
So what are we, what are we signing off on then? Did we just approve?
That we're approving for them to go out to borrow that money. If they need, because I believe it's to the ladder truck.
Yes, for the frame, for the...
Frame.
Oh, okay.
That's the one that had some...
Delaminated metal.
Yeah, it was starting to delaminate.
Okay.
Got it. That was a $500,000, I think.
It's down a lot.
They got it down at 200.
Oh, good. Cool. All right, do you have the sheet that we should sign that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have it here, so.
Want to make a motion?
Yes. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for approval for the fire department truck borrowing.
Borrowing?
Yeah. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry.
All of the sign lists.
Okay, the next thing we have is the appointment of zoning board of appeals. We have two for the zoning board. One is for a full-time member. And his name is Scott Newman. Again, that's for a full-time position on the zoning enforcement panel. And then for a part-time, or for an alternate, I should say, Joan Kulikowski. And she can be appointed for the zoning board also, again, as an alternate. For a motion to okay the appointment of these two?
Do I have to do them separately or to go?
I would say separate.
Yeah, okay. I will make a motion to accept the application for Scott Newman for the zoning board of appeals. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post, carry. Again, for an alternate.
And the question on these would be if somebody knew something about either of these people that wouldn't, and wouldn't recommend them.
Correct.
Because based on what I just read here, they look, they have kids. Okay.
And for Joan Kulikowski, for, as an alternate, some motion to pointer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joan Kulikowski to the zoning board of appeals.
As an alternate.
I'll second alternate.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. So let me ask a quick question. Are all the appointments now filled? Uh, I think we need one more alternate for the zoning board.
Yeah, zoning should be followed.
Zoning, so I think we need one alternate maybe for timing. The strangers?
Frank's still out of the zone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Any volunteers? Any volunteers? I don't care.
Good to have everybody filled.
Oh, yes, I'm good.
That's great.
Do you want to, let this work pass around real quick for the places that not get taxes?
Okay. Yeah, it gets, can get hard to find people in these positions, but it's wonderful. We have a nice, this village is pretty supportive.
The sprint?
Different than the tower.
Yeah.
For communication?
No, that's, um...
I don't know, Scott.
The tower's not only...
It's Crown Castle?
Yeah, and it's, is that, see the, see the cost there, the 60%?
Oh, yeah.
It's tiny, tiny, little.
She's actually a buyer of coaster on the front of this building.
Yeah, and that's her, and that's Hannah's house here.
So she does, yeah.
Yeah.
That's on the, down across from the thing. Yeah. Hey, anything on your old business? I think a few of them, we just forgot to pay it.
Yeah, we have the same people every year. Some people, for some reason, like it to go to the county and be put on their escrow or whatnot, which it causes, I mean, it's a lot of extra fees and things.
Yeah, what do they gain from that? They got to pay all the extra interest and stuff.
Cash flow.
Maybe. And then, and then there are more or two in there, even though I forgot. But Renee sent out reminders, sent out letters saying, hey, don't forget, which is really helpful to people.
What was the sprint one?
Uh, if you see the price down there, that what they always, it's just a tiny, tiny little speck of land somewhere.
The only thing I just thought of that I'll tell the board about is when we make the switch over to the power up to the Oxbow, there's going to be, I'm thinking 30, 30 customers that are going to be switched along with residential customers. It's just, they're, they happen to be on that, that circuit, that line. In order to get the power from that station up there, we got to go down like Gibson Street. So the homes on Gibson Street will have to be, the transformers will have to be changed. It's just a tap on them. We bought those knowing that the state was coming, so it's just a matter of, we're going to get Spencer Portier in Churchville here to help us with the switching of those tubs to change them to the other voltage. But in case you hear somebody saying, they might, you know, there's going to be like 30 people probably, 30 to 40 tops.
Which the timeframe is expected to be?
Uh, we're, we're going to tell them three hours. I don't think it'll even take that long. Basically, what you have to do is go up though and pull the leads out of, out of the transformer to isolate the homes. And then you switch the tap, and you make sure with the voltmeter that it's got the correct voltage to make sure that it's switched.
Yeah.
Okay? And then you put the, shut back off, put the leads back on, boom, then you turn them back on. So as long as all the tubs switch, you know, every now and then you can, you might find one that internally it doesn't click. And then you, you know, we have spares, so we would have to go and get one. Three hours should be more than enough, and mutually it'll be here to, to help us along that.
Those people are going to be notified?
Yeah, we, I was talking to Courtney. We're going to go door to door and put flyers on all the doors to all the homes that would be affected. Okay?
So it's like right on their Thanksgiving dinner, they...
Stone goes out.
Yeah, when will it be?
Uh, when did I tell you? Next Thursday, 20th? Yeah, a week from tomorrow. We're hoping to switch that power over, sorry.
That's honestly quite an achievement.
Yeah, so if you hear some people are saying, hey, my power's going out, you'll know. You'll know why. Okay. So for that, I'll, I'll free you. Okay? Any other old business? I guess no. All right. Producer on the floor, we have some guests here.
Tell them who you are. My name is Caitlin Wong.
She's wrong. I am virgin.
Virgin?
She's here for what class?
For my economics class.
Okay. Welcome, Caitlin. Yeah, welcome. So you're just here to observe? Oh, very good.
Just to write a little paper.
Very good.
And turn it in for her class. And maybe somebody could sign off that she was here?
Oh, we could.
Do you have any questions about what you saw tonight? Okay.
Are you in the village?
Uh, no, we're in Churchville.
Okay.
Well, we're virgin, we're on Johnson.
Johnson, okay.
Yeah. She comes with me, I'm on the school board too. So she's been with me to some of those, so.
Oh, very good.
She's like, okay, I don't know anybody. I'm going with you.
I'm glad you could come.
We usually get partnership in government or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That come in, yeah. And near the end of the school year... And near the end of the school year, I get bombarded with stuff from the kids, you know?
She does a lot of sports. So right now, we're a week in between sports. So I'm like, where are we going? We gotta get this done. So. Is there any opportunities in the village for like donating time or helping out or community service, that kind of thing? For the village itself?
Well, we always... I never say no, okay? We have, yeah, usually in the better weather. But you know, come spring, when we have cleanup and plant flowers and... And community beautification.
Summer rec.
Just follow the...
Yeah, summer rec program. Yeah, you could... How many do we get for counselors there?
I don't know how many kids we have, but there's two paid and two or three volunteers.
Yeah. So if you're interested, you know, call the village office and ask for Courtney here. And he'll take good care of you, okay? Yeah, thanks for that. Okay. Anything else before I proceed to close? With that, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second.
All in favor? Short meeting?